Hey, George.
There he is.
Good evening, George.
Hi, George. Not listening.
We're looking at you, George.
Hi, George.
He needs to hold up a piece of paper.
There you go. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Steve, Mr. Cohen, I see your name as an attendee as well as.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I don't want to, I mean, if it ain't broke, don't work it, but I do see your name on that side. So I wonder about that. How's that possible?
That's a good question. Oh, wait. I actually, let me see.
Now I don't anymore, so.
Okay, yeah, I actually, I, in my, in my quest to get on it, make sure I got it, I had it on two different computers. So I just got rid of one.
Okay.
So we think we're ready to begin?
I don't think we're expecting a Harlan.
Okay.
Reporter is here, so that's.
Since tonight is reorganization meeting, it falls to me to read the opening statement. We'll take a roll call and then we will take nominations for chair. And once our chair is elected, I will turn it over to, to the chair of the meeting. So let me begin. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held electronically via Zoom on January nineteen, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty P M. Pursuant to section thirteen of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice at the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the sunshine notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of the notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on January seventh, twenty twenty-two, and has been posted to the municipal website. Pursuant to Executive Order one oh seven, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment will be held electronically via Zoom. And this notice was transmitted to the Packet, the Town Topics, The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on twenty-fourth day of April, twenty twenty. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and are to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of same to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, The Trentonian, Comcast Media, by filing a copy thereof with the Clerk of Princeton. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. So Claude, if you would take the role, please.
Wilson?
Here.
And?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenenbaum? Mr. Stein?
I'm here.
And Ms. Donna?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so now we'll proceed to reorganization. The board would like to open the floor for nominations of chairman. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Steve Cohen.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing now. I think we could accomplish this with simply a voice vote, so I'm going to say all in favor. Say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then, Steve, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you now.
Thank you, and thanks. Thank you, board members. I appreciate your support. Our next, our next post would be Vice Chairman. Are there any nominations?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. Stephen Schreiber.
I'll second that.
Okay. Karen, would we do the same voice vote?
I think so, yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Okay. Stephen, you're Vice Chair.
Thank you. Thank you all.
What do we have? Secretary? Is that correct?
Attorney. Attorney.
I think the attorney, the attorney nomination is next.
The attorney? Well, how do we do this? Do we, do we, we don't nominate, we just.
No, I think Claudia wasn't.
Just gonna adopt the resolutions.
Yeah, there was a resolution, wasn't there in the package? So that's what you'd be doing, you'd be moving, there was same thing for the secretary as well, there's a resolution.
All right. What can I do here?
Oh, I'll move adoption of the resolution to appoint Karen Casey L L C as attorney.
I'll second it.
Will we do the same voice vote, Karen?
That should be fine.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And now we have what, secretary? And again, is that, how do we do that, Karen?
There should be, Claudia, isn't there a resolution?
Yes.
Yes, there's a resolution.
So it'd be the same thing, someone will move the resolution appointing Claudia Secretary second, and then we'll take.
I move adoption, approval of the resolution to appoint Claudia Sabelas Secretary for the time January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
I second that.
It's a, it'll be a voice vote.
Yeah, so we need a voice vote, Steve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Welcome back, Claudia.
Yep.
All right. And now we have the end of the year report. I believe we have a copy of it, do we want to discuss it? Any comments on it? Anyone? Okay. All right, there are no comments. What do we do? Do we adopt it and pass it on to the council?
Yes.
Okay. So. I, I, could I just say, if there's a simple, quick explanation of the, the very last one, number three, recommending considering the elimination of variances for non-conforming lots. I just wondered where, where a proposed house meets the bulk requirement. I guess that, oh, no, I'm sorry, the one before that about flood zones. Sorry, I just wondered if, if that was.
Chairman Cohen, can I speak to that?
Yes.
You know, I, I was going to wait to swear you in, but we'll swear you in now for the evening. You swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Well, after the tropical storm Ida this summer, there were numerous people who have contacted myself and the engineering department about raising their houses due to repeated floods, and some of the houses are in flood zone, so we have a case tonight is a prime example. It's in the setback, the raise the house requires a variance, so we're, we're looking at something similar to after Hurricane Sandy, where they allowed houses by the beach to be elevated above the base flood level elevation, so, so people don't have to apply for a variance to, to raise their house, so it seems to be a more common occurrence, these intensive flooding situations, so trying to think proactively.
Yeah, I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah. I just, thanks, I just, I was curious about that, and I, that's kind of what I thought, but I just want to make sure I wasn't thinking the wrong thing, so.
Okay. All right, so moving along, we have a number of resolutions this evening. The first in your packet is Z twenty-one dash oh nine seven forty-four Prince William Court Block seventy-seven oh one, lot thirty-one in the R five zone. It, the, a copy of the resolution was in your packet. Are there any questions, comments on the resolution? If not, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you. Excuse me, I, I, I don't mean to go back, but Michael, I believe you had a question when we were going to, when we were talking about the, the end of the year report, I'm sorry, I didn't come back to you.
Um. Yeah, maybe I'm. I did have something on my mind, and it, it, it has nothing to do with the, directly with the applicant, one of the applications, Collier, but I'm, I, I'm just uncomfortable with that neighborhood character ordinance that requires the garage be so set back, especially in a town with so many older neighborhoods or built out where it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's an unusual situation to do that. I understand the neighborhood character ordinance, one of the things they wanted to stop, and I agree with it, is the, what I think they call it, the, the nose construction where the, the garage is like far in front of the main house, it's the L-shaped houses, modern houses. I, I personally wish that garages could be flush rather than that far setback. I don't know if anybody else has those feelings.
Well, my concern, my concern with the, with the, in a sense, the neighborhood character ordinance, I don't, I don't disagree with, with garages not facing the street, but I think the bigger issue is it sort of inches towards a design criteria with one small aspect of it. And I think if we're going to do something that starts to talk about, let's call it the aesthetics or the, or the function of a house, then we have to have a criteria for a number of other things in addition to that. And I don't think there's been any discussion of a design criteria for a single-family home, so you know, we've had a number of cases come before us on the neighborhood character ordinance, because as you said, there are so many older homes in Princeton. It's, in some cases, difficult to do what you want to do, and we have a, a huge number of undersized lots.
Well, I, I was just speaking to that one aspect of it. Not all kinds of other neighborhood character. It's whether the garage needs to be that far setback, or it could be flush. The ordinance says it needs to be setback, even if every, every house on the street doesn't, you know, has it flush, or, yeah, I, I just, that's all. I don't, I don't want to open a big can of worms on all kinds of design criteria, question of the legality of design. No, just that one thing.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Do you want to amend the zoning report to add that?
Um. I think it's a, it's something we can discuss, I'm not saying, I mean, I would like to see it amended, but I don't know if that's sort of the, the pleasure of the board, or if the board wants to discuss it further and talk about it at another meeting, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth further discussion, I, I agree, it's, it's very difficult to achieve on, in, in, in certain neighborhoods. So, yeah, I, I would support further discussion at the right time.
How do, Derek, how would we do that? Would we put something in there that the, that the zoning board is, is, would like to comment on that? And we'll, we'll create a memo and forward it?
Yeah, we could, we could delay, you know, transmission of this report and approval to the February meeting. Obviously, we have a meeting next week, but there's a pretty full agenda in that meeting, and, I mean, maybe you want to think about whether it's always a tricky thing when, you know, I think new construction, it definitely, that's what the crafters of the, the ordinance had in mind, and then when you, when you add on to an existing structure, it's like difficult to, to make this work in a lot of cases, and that's, a lot of the stuff we've seen has been existing homes being remodeled, and then, you know, the trick is, what's a remodel versus a new home, you know, and but it's worthy of discussion, you can think about it a month, and we could still get the report to council at the end of February, if, if the board's happy with that and they want to give it a little more thought.
Maybe we could, maybe, you know, board members can think about it, we can maybe take a couple of minutes if the meeting next week doesn't last too long and talk about it at the end, and then, you know, finalize it if you were, and then transmit it.
Sure.
Okay.
And, you know, may, maybe Claudia could send an excerpt of, of that, because I don't even know if everyone has that ordinance.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I'd like to see it.
Good. Claudia, can you do that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, that was.
Good. All right, on to the, we voted on the first resolution, let's go on to the second, seventy-one.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't call the, the roll call for the the motion.
Oh, did we vote on it, or we didn't vote on it?
You had a motion and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I know I interrupted things, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the next case is Z twenty-one dash one oh seven seventy-one Deer Path Block seventy-five oh seven, lot nine in the R five district. Again, the resolution is in your packets. Any questions or comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve it.
Second, Michael Floyd.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes, I keep saying, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Bad hearing, sorry, okay. The third, third resolution. Z, case Z twenty-one dash one oh five seventy-one Leave It Lane Block thirty-two point oh six, lot one twenty-three point oh two in the R two district. Again, it's in your packet, questions, comments, or motions?
One, one small comment. At the end, when you're recording, Karen, the in-favor votes.
Yeah.
It has, has Mr. Snyder instead.
Well, yes, like, I did, I'm sorry, I corrected that online, and I'm sorry, it didn't make its way to all of you, but thank you for bringing that up again, yes.
Okay.
That's been correct, thank you.
You are good to catch that. I didn't really read that far, I wrote down, I was like, okay, I'm done.
Spent inside, didn't see it.
I saw a couple of typos, not in this one, but other ones, but.
Yeah.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Steve, you cannot vote on this because you voted in favor of the application, and ultimately, it was denied. So the people who can vote on this, including a motion and a second, are Eve, Steve Cohen, Jim Davich, and Michael Floyd. Everyone else.
Draw my.
It's, it's a little bit backwards, but the other remaining members voted essentially against this, they voted for the project, so I'll be against this, this result.
I'll move to approve the resolution then. Mr. Davich?
I'll second it, Eve Coulson.
Okay, Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Next one, twenty, well, KC twenty-one dash one thirty-eight twenty Moore Street, block twenty-eight oh three, lot eighty in the R four zone. Questions, comments, or a motion?
I move for approval.
I'll second it.
Wilson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Stein? Mr. Stein?
George, you're muted. You're muted, George.
Still muted. Can he gives a thumbs up as an affirmative?
Yes, yes. All right.
Mr. Cohen, Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our last resolution. Case Z twenty-two-one dash zero zero five one seventy-six Edgerstone Road, block ninety-three oh three, lot one in the R two zone of the former township, the Hun School. Any comments, questions, motions?
I'll move approval, Michael Floyd.
Thank you.
Second, Stein.
Okay. Claudia?
Wilson?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now on to the applications. Our first application is case Z twenty-one dash zero twenty-eight twenty-five Lytle Street Block fifteen point oh two, lot sixty-eight and eighty-six in the R four zone with a Spoon Jackson area.
Noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
Excellent. Okay, are the are the applicants here?
Yes, I am here.
Mrs. Sagra, are you going to present the application tonight, or do you have an attorney?
I have my architect.
The architect, all right, what I'm gonna do, let me swear you in, and Mr. Fortunato, you're here as well, Brad?
Yes, ma'am, yes, I am.
We will swear you both in now, if you both raise your red hand. You both swear affirm the testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Fortunato, just for the record, you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're the project architect? Or?
Well, I'm the architect.
You're the, you're.
I'm the architect, I mean, there's no other project team, I'm, I'm it.
Okay, fair enough, all right.
You're the, you're the architect of record.
Right.
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, okay. Derek, do you want to read or summarize your memo?
Yes, sir, thank you. Grace Sagra Stanley is the owner and applicant of twenty-five Lytle Street, it's located in the R four zone in the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District, and she is seeking a C one variance to permit the one-story addition, in exception to the required smaller side yard in height to setback. An additional bulk variance is requested and required to construct a deck, in exception to the required thirty-five-foot rear yard setback. The subject property is non-compliant with regard to the six thousand square foot lot area, the existing lot area is four thousand four hundred and sixty square feet. It's not complying with the lot width requirement of sixty feet, the existing's fifty point one feet, and it's non, non-complying with regard to the hundred-foot lot depth, the existing's eighty-nine point nine eight, and the, the subject property itself is not complying with the required three-to-one height to setback, and it's not complying with the re required smaller side yard setback of eight feet, the existing's two feet. The applicant seeking to propose a one-story addition to the subject property, the space will be comprised of a kitchen and a dining room, the addition encroaches into the side yard setback and increases the existing degree of non-compliance of the height to setback ratio. A second-story addition containing a bedroom is permitted as of right. Rear deck connected to this proposed bedroom addition encroaches into the thirty-five-foot rear yard setback, so I'll just recap the variances. This addition, close to the side yard setback, increases the height to setback ratio, the non-compliance of that, the required is three-to-one, the proposed is nine point one eight to one. It also encroaches into the required eight-foot setback, the proposed setback is one point five eight feet, and then the deck, as I mentioned earlier, encroaches into the required thirty-five-foot rear yard setback. The, the proposed setback is thirty-three feet, they have seeking relief under the C one criteria, and the prop, project was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, and Elizabeth Kim is here this evening to speak to that app, that, that review, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them, otherwise, I'll hand it over to Elizabeth.
And Ms. Kim, we'll just swear you in for tonight, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Cohen and zoning board members, for the opportunity for the Historic Preservation Commission to review this application, as Mr. Bridger had stated, this property falls within the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District, and the H B C did a courtesy review for your board. The H B C considered this application at their meeting on August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The property is identified with a house that was built between eighteen ninety. It is two stories, three-bay, single-family, with one- and two-story rear additions. The oldest portion of the house is a central rectangular section. As Mr. Bridger identified, the proposed addition consists of a one- and two-story addition in the rear of the house. The new one-story addition will be on the west side of the house with the shed roof, and both additions will contain, will be contained within the current width of the existing house. The two-story addition will be on the east side of the house with a gable roof and the five-by-ten deck constructed off the second floor. There's a common landing that will be built on the east elevation of the house that will provide access for new and existing side doors. The addition is proposed to have a stucco finish on the outside, which will match the existing structure's material and color. H B C was satisfied the applicant's proposed rear addition is modest and is what they consider compatible to the historic district. It would not diminish the ability to preserve the existing short portion of the house and would be consistent with the streetscape within the Witherspoon-Jackson Historic District. And because of those reasons, H B C unanimously supports and recommends to your board approval of the bulk variances sought by the applicant, and I'm available for any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Are there any questions, Ms. Kim? Okay, thank you again, Elizabeth. All right. I guess, Mr. Fortunato, do you want to continue?
Yes, yeah, I'll explain, I'll continue further with what Derek was mentioning earlier, but the setback requirements and why we're here today. Essentially, the existing home sits two feet from the side yard property line. And there is twenty point three feet on the other side. So it's obviously way over to one side of the property. But what we were trying to do is extend the existing kitchen for basically more room. The kitchen is very, very small. So if you have the drawings in front of you, you can see that we are extending in line with the existing house. So we're not really encroaching any further than beyond the current face of the house. But unfortunately, the property skews slightly. So even though it might be two feet at the corner of the existing, it skews closer to one point seven five feet to the property line. Again, just trying to hold the same line going straight back. And then the other violation would essentially be the deck. We were trying to get a second-floor balcony for them. It's only a five-foot deck, but it encroaches two feet into the rear yard setback at the second level. The rest of the second level does conform to the zoning requirements. Essentially, we're really here to see if we could justify this kitchen addition and try and keep, see what we can really do. Because unfortunately, the setback minimum is eight feet. So it's going to be awfully difficult to encroach six feet into the existing kitchen and try and make it functional. So we're here today to see if we can get a variance for extending the kitchen in the same line and plane of the house now.
Thank you. I'm just looking at your site plan. On your site plan, does the, the steps, the steps alongside the home? Oh, I'm good, I know, I got it, I understand. Forget my question. Okay. Any board members have any questions of Mr. Fortunato? Okay, only, the only question I have is on the, on the, the left side of, the right side of the house, if you face it from the street, you're, you're only, you're only, you're a very short distance from the property line. Can you have any new windows on that side?
On the second floor, there is, but not on the first floor. We have a door, a side door, which essentially is that small landing and steps that we have, which there are steps there now. We just made it longer towards the backyard to reach the second door that's going to be essentially in the dinette area of the kitchen.
But you have a window on the second floor, there, right, a new window?
Yeah, there's a new window on the second floor addition, and the.
That would fall into the same situation as proximity of glass to the property line. It's, it's a building code item, just, I'm just mentioning it.
Well, that's within twenty-one feet of the neighbor of the property line. So we're well, well far enough away from. Yeah, that, that window's not an issue. As far as the, the, that's why we did not put a window on the kitchen extension. That's basically a solid wall.
Yeah, you're right.
You're very close to that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Are there any other questions of Mr. Fortunato? Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Kim. Can I ask that now, or?
No, go ahead.
I didn't see the back of this house. Does it, does what they're proposing to do in the back kind of meet the neighborhood background? I don't know how to phrase that question. I don't, I don't have a drawing of the other houses around this. I don't know how, what this addition is doing in relation to the other houses.
So the Witherspoon Jackson Historic District is classified as a type two. There are two classifications. There's type one, which was actually like the former township, where there was more land, obviously, around each property. And type two is, is actually mostly in the form of borough, which was also designated for this newer district. And it really is because there's, you know, the lots are modest, they're, they're close together. And so the purview of HPC's review is really from the public right-of-way. So that's why there was really minimal comments on the rear, because they cannot see it from the public right-of-way. The only sections they can see is the additions from the side and more probably for the deck, because they have that large parking area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If I could add, though, the, and as to your question, the stucco of the house that exists now is going to be maintained around the whole house. We're not going to put vinyl siding or something down the backside. It's going to maintain the same stucco look all the way around, as well as the same color of the house all the way around.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question about, there's a fence now that kind of separates the driveway from the backyard. Is that, is that, that will have to be moved in order to accommodate the stairs to the side?
Yes, it's, there's this, there is a small wooden fence. We're going to slightly modify that, but we, but we have to. I mean, because we got to make the landing, but it's going to be rebuilt.
Okay.
Replaced in kind as best we can to make it work with the design.
It's a, it's a wooden fence, looks, is it, yeah, okay.
Okay, any more questions? Okay. Before we open this to the public, Mr. Fortunato or Ms. Sagra? Do you have any, like, anything you'd like to say in closing, before we ask for public comment, then go to executive session?
I have nothing to say, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Mr. Fortunato, anything?
No, I think we pretty much explained the best we could, the project in hand.
Okay, all right. We'll go to the public portion of the hearing. Claudia, is there anybody in the audience who has raised their hands in regard to this application?
No, no, no hands.
Okay, we'll close the public portion and go into executive session. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Or would someone like to make a, a, a motion? Seems to be a fairly simple addition, and it seems to be, as Ms. Kim said, in character with the neighborhood. And I think it's, I'm, I'm very comfortable with it.
Yeah, I agree, I think it looks pretty reasonable. The little encroachment in the back for that deck is going to be so elevated, it's not going to make much of a difference. And the rest of it seems to be in keeping with what's happening, so I support it as well.
Okay. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve it. And I'll just add that also, in a way, that the kitchen, the fact that you're moving that sink away from staring right into the neighbors, it kind of increases the privacy between the two houses on the tight side.
Yeah, and the, the west-side neighbor, they were noticed, and they haven't come to object or anything. So I think I'm fine with it.
Seems reasonable to me also.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, Claudia?
Okay, Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Mr. Stein?
Yes.
Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our second application is KC twenty-one dash one thirty, one oh three Kyler Road, block seventy-two oh one, lot four, in the R six zone. Karen, is everything in order?
It is, and the board has jurisdiction tonight to hear the application.
All right, Derek, would you summarize your memo, please?
Thank you, Chairman Cohen.
Thank you.
Michael Bell and Jane McCarthy are the owners and applicants of one oh three Kyler Road. It's located in the R six zone in the former Princeton Township. They're seeking C one and C two variance relief to remit the construction of an attached garage, in exception to the required front yard setback. The subject lot is complying with respect to the applicable bulk regulations. However, the house itself does not comply with the front yard setback. On Ewing, the requirement is forty-six point nine two, which is a prevailing setback, and the existing is twenty-six point five. The applicants purchased the property in two thousand sixteen and rented it out until two thousand twenty-one, at which time they began, or excuse me, they began work with an architect in two thousand nineteen to implement design changes that would make it easier for them to age in place. They are proposing to remove the existing driveway on Kyler Road and install a new curb-cutting driveway on the Ewing Street facade that will lead to a new parking space and an attached garage and a workshop consisting of five hundred and seventy-three square feet. The project requires a variance from the neighborhood character ordinance, which was enacted in two thousand eighteen, which requires that front-facing garages be set back sixteen feet from the nearest portion of the facade of the house. The proposed garage will be eight point five feet in front of the house. There's a variance for that. And in addition, it encroaches into the required prevailing front yard setback of forty-six point nine two. The existing setback is twenty-six point five, and the proposed will be twenty-five point two five feet. They have requested consideration under both the C one and C two criteria. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have no questions. Does anyone else have any questions, Mr. Bridger? Okay. Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy, would you like to present the application?
Let me, let me just swear both of you in.
You're muted, oh, there you go.
We're just going to swear you in. You both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
We do, I do.
And do I understand your architect is here tonight with you, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
Yes.
All right, why don't we? But I think.
We need to change.
Yeah, we need, we need to change the name designation. And it looks, I see the mute symbol, so I'm going to ask you to, to.
Hi, this is Heidi Fichtenbaum.
And Ms. Fichtenbaum, are you a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And you're the architect of record for the project, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, we'll, we'll accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, someone begin?
Okay, we have a presentation we would like to make. And if you could allow me to share the screen.
Certainly.
Then I can bring that up, it's a PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
All right, let me see if we can do that. Yes, here we are. And I'll put this into full-screen mode. Is that going to work? I think you should be able to see that now.
Mr. Bell, before you get started, why don't we make, I assume this is a PowerPoint slide presentation, why don't we call it all collectively Exhibit A one?
That's fine.
Okay, great.
All right. As the chairman has introduced, and Mr. Bridger outlined, this is an application for the addition of an attached garage and workroom to our house at one oh three Kyler Road, Princeton. And we are the owners, Michael Bell and Jane McCarthy. This is application Z twenty-one, one thirty. So if I move down here, I think I can advance these slides.
Yeah. Michael and I have lived in the semi-rural portion of Greecity for more than thirty-five years. Princeton has been the center of our social and cultural life over that period. Our present house and location are not suitable for aging in place. And we've realized that having a walkable neighborhood would allow us to age in place. We looked for several years to find a house in Princeton that was on one level, had walking distance to services, including grocery and hardware store and other services. It was on a smaller property, we currently have a three-and-a-half-acre property, and one that has an attached garage for safe access in all weather conditions. We bought the house at one oh three Kyler Road in two thousand sixteen with plans to add a garage, since it does not have one. We wanted to add that garage when we were ready to move. And we're now ready to move. We like the neighborhood and have met some of the neighbors at neighborhood gatherings.
Yep, the original house was built in nineteen fifty-four, and it's in the R six zone.
So we've worked with Heidi Fichtenbaum, who you just met, to create a house that would have, to modify the house, to have an accessible bathroom, to upgrade the windows, insulation, the HVAC appliances, and to improve the energy efficiency. And we also would like, propose to add a single-car attached garage, which is the subject of this application. And the reason for doing that is to provide safe access in all weather, so that we could get in and out of the car and get on the road without having to cope with ice, snow, rain, other weather conditions, wind. And at the same time, we're trying to preserve the basic structure of the house, mature trees, and the character of the neighborhood. And we've gotten approval for the internal renovations, which are now underway. This is a three-D rendering of the house seen from the northeast. You can see Kyler Road, which is at fronts upon here. You could see the long driveway that goes up to the house. It, in the past, had a carport here, but was, that was changed in about nineteen ninety-nine. This is Ewing Street. And I'll show you the, what we've proposed in the next slide. And yes, I wanted to point out, this driveway is very close to the corner, the intersection with Ewing Street. In fact, from the stop line for this, here, it is eleven feet, two inches to the beginning of the driveway. This view shows the house with our proposed addition, which is composed of a small workroom and then a single-car garage with the driveway leading to it from the Ewing Street side of the house. We propose to remove the driveway that leads to Kyler Road, making a much safer situation here, because coming out of a driveway right at the corner is a very dangerous situation. We've designed it this way in order to preserve this tree, this maple tree. And having a little workroom there allows that attachment. In the next slide, we'll show you the same view, only with the maple tree removed, or only removing it so you can see what the rest of the, of the facade of the garage and the workroom look like. And I also want to point out that there is a fence, existing fence, six-foot stockade fence that comes across here, along here, along the back of the property, and then along the boundary and back to the house here. So it encloses the backyard. And there's a row of arborvitaries that actually come all the way, well, yes, just to about there.
All right. Now, the details of the lot create some challenges for adding that garage. We're on a corner lot, so we have two frontages, that on Kyler and the one on Ewing. The existing driveway, as Jane said, is very close to the corner here because of the tapering of the lot, because Ewing is not perpendicular to Kyler Road. Whoops, we've sent that back. We have a fifty-foot setback from Kyler, which was prescribed at the time the house was built in nineteen fifty-four, according to the nineteen twenty-eight deed, which subdivided the whole Loomis tract. There's no room at either end of the house also for a garage without encroaching into either the twenty-five-yard front, twenty-five-foot. either the twenty five yard front, twenty five foot front yard setback on this side or the fifteen foot side yard setback over here. So the only place we could think of putting a garage is in the rear here, or we'd have to put it right here in this deed setback. So the proposed garage complies with the municipal setbacks of the R six zone prior to twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen, sorry. We're going to remove the existing sixty three foot driveway to Kyler Road, install that new shorter driveway to Ewing Street. It's farther from the corner, much safer entrance. It creates less impervious coverage than the long driveway out to Kyler. And the whole garage is set back so we can preserve that mature maple tree shown here, and it's joined to the house by that small workroom. The variances that are needed here are that the house or the structures need to be behind the or not encroach under the mean prevailing setback ordinance from twenty sixteen, and that mean prevailing setback is forty six point nine feet, as Mr. Bridger said. Our proposed garage is twenty five point two five feet from the Ewing Street boundary, but the existing house is already twenty six point five feet from Ewing. Then there's the neighborhood character ordinance of twenty eighteen, which says that front facing garages should be set back sixteen feet from the nearest portion of the house facade, whereas our proposed garage will project eight point five feet in front of the house. Now, let's examine what the implications of satisfying those requirements would be. If we apply the mean prevailing setback to our garage from the property line out here, the garage should move from this shaded area here. I've taken it forty four point nine feet back to position A because I've allowed the two feet encroachment, which I think you're allowed on that mean prevailing setback. If we then apply the sixteen foot setback, we'd move back to position B. The back of the garage would be here, the front would be under this dotted line here, and that would completely destroy our existing patio and the view from the kitchen window and the dining room bay window here, which would otherwise be into our backyard. We'd reduce the open space in the backyard by thirty five percent. The longer driveway increases the impervious coverage by two hundred square feet, and we essentially eliminate any connection to the garage for our aging in place goal. And we believe the plan that we have preserves the intent of the zoning requirements while achieving our goal. We would preserve the main frontage on Kyler, provide an attractive frontage on Ewing, although non compliant. It's very much in keeping with the existing neighborhood. The single car garage with door windows minimizes the visual impact of the new garage, and it creates a stepped facade from the house front to the workroom to the garage with added windows all along there, and it preserves that large shade tree. So to summarize, we seek variances under criteria C one hardship and C two good land use because our location is so constrained by the existing specific conditions, the tapering corner lot and the house location relative to both Kyler and Ewing. Satisfying all the setback requirements would reduce the open space and adversely affect the backyard, greatly increase the impervious coverage, and granting the setback variances will preserve the existing neighborhood character of single story houses, improve traffic safety by moving the driveway, and make it possible for us to adapt the house for aging in place. So thank you for your attention.
You're welcome. Nice presentation. Okay, do you, does anybody else? Ms. Fichtenbaum, do you want to speak to this at all?
Yeah, I just want to say, I feel like the clients worked very hard to comply to the greatest extent possible with the many ordinances that Princeton has, including minimizing impervious coverage, preserving shade trees, and, you know, keeping the, the main structure of the house, not letting the garage become the, you know, front and center. The front door and the main facade of the, the house remains intact. They also chose to build just a one car garage. They could have easily done a two car garage and not had the little workroom, but all of these things were actually considered in, in order to meet many of the, and preserve open space on the property to the greatest extent possible. So all of these things were considered, and so we feel very strongly that we have not, that we are not undermining the zoning ordinances by, with the design that we have and that the lot and the position of the house on the lot are the, the factors that have governed the, the choices and the, the limited choices that we had to achieve the goal of them being able to age safely in place in Princeton.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. McCarthy, or Mr. Bell, Ms. McCarthy, I keep everything confused here. Do you want to say anything before we go into executive session? Oh, excuse me, before we open it to the public for comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We could show you various other of the neighboring houses which are similar style to ours and which we hope that this house will continue to fit in with. I don't know whether you would want to see any of those presentations, but we.
It's, it's up to you. I mean, whatever you'd like to present, we're more than welcome to hear.
Well, I, I guess I would just ask if, if any of the members of the zoning board have questions for us, or they feel that any additional material would be helpful, happy to share it with you, but if you feel that you have a clear understanding of the, the location and the case that we've presented, we'll leave it rest here.
Okay. Board members, are there any, any questions or anything more you'd like to hear from the applicant?
I guess I have a question for Derek. Excuse me, Michael, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I was, Derek, I was assumed the front facing garage was to the front, front drive, not to a side like that. I don't quite understand how that ordinance fits into this drawing.
Well, someday when we harmonize the two ordinances, we'll all have the same set of rules. Right now, the borough, the former borough has one front yard on, on a corner, and the former township has two front yards. So these folks kind of got, you know, the worst of both worlds.
Yeah.
With the prevailing front yard setback and the prohibition on the, the garage setback.
Yeah, I thought in your answer earlier to Michael, you said it, you know, it was the intent of the ordinance was for front facing garages. So I, I don't have a problem with this one because I don't think, you know, the, the address isn't going to change. We're going to stay on the other, other streets.
Okay. Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I have a question for the architect. Heidi, the, I couldn't find it anywhere, just the garage alone. What's the length and width of that? How, how big is that garage?
I believe that the garage is out to out. I think, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's fourteen feet and twenty four feet long. And that is just because, you know, we've sort of felt that if you are, especially when you're elderly, and sometimes I, I found this very much with my father, who was used to walker towards the end of his life, that trying to navigate into his garage, which was very, very narrow, and get the door open and get into the car, you know, it was very challenging. And so, you know, it's true that it could be, you know, a foot narrow or whatever, but this seemed, without being overly generous, appropriately sized, especially considering the age of the clients and their intention to age here. And while they are both able bodied right now, we all know that, you know, that's, that's something that you have to think about. They don't need the accessible bathroom, but they're spending the money to build a fully ADA compliant bathroom right now, knowing that they may need it in the future.
Um, and I, I wasn't concerned about the width. I was concerned about the length because the length generates the, the degree of protrusion. So could it be any shorter?
Could be, you know, I think we could easily lose maybe two feet from the length of the garage without severely impacting, you know, the, the, the design.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant or the architect?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm looking at that parking area off to the side of the garage, and it looks like you have some coverage to spare, some impervious coverage to spare, but it, it just looks like it, that driveway is probably actually going to have to be increased possibly a bit to get into that side, that side parking strip area.
Now, I looked at the, the turning radiuses very carefully to be sure that a car would maneuver easily into that spot, and it's required because you have to have two parking places, even though they're one couple with one car, but you need two parking places. And, you know, I'm sort of strongly environmentally minded, and so, you know, I really counseled them to minimize the amount of impervious cover there to the greatest degree possible.
And we can code that, yes, we, we were trying to prevent or hold back as much impervious cover as we could in the design.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, I just want to make sure that that was, that was verified.
Thank you. Additional comments? Okay.
I was going to ask a question, sorry, I was muted. So just the fence, as it shows on here, it looks like it's, is it Xed out or is that the fence is remaining, correct?
Yes, the fence is remaining. There will be a cut through the fence to take the driveway through, and it'll probably taper down the edge of that cut, so it doesn't come up to a square cut, but is angled in towards maybe half the height at the edges of the cut in the fence.
Yeah, good. That, that sounds good, yeah. When I looked at it from the street, I think that makes really good sense. It gives you more visibility when you're backing out, too.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, that sounds good.
Additional comments? Okay. Before we open it to the public, do you have anything you want to say in closing before we go to public comment?
I'm good.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, that we, we specifically chose to maintain the house as it is, rather than doing a teardown and building something new because we care about the neighborhood and we wanted to keep it being something that fit in the rest of the neighborhood and kept the same neighborhood character. And that was a, a specific choice we made.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, let's go into public comment. Claudia, has anybody indicated they'd like to speak on this, on the application?
There are no hands.
No hands. Okay. We'll close the public portion and go into executive session. Again, once again, Ms. McCarthy, Mr. Bell, do you want to say anything before we go into executive session?
No.
No, miss. No, thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, board members, let's discuss this. Your comments? I think it's a very nicely done addition. I think it's, I think the house, it's, it's an attractive small house. The fact that they're moving the driveway around the corner and away from the, the intersection is, I think is very good. It'll clean up the front of the house, it'll be a lot safer. I think the location of the garage is just logical, pushing it back, although the ordinance required the sixteen feet, pushing it back would just basically push the driveway back and, and really hurt the open space in the back of the house and the build abilities in those rooms that open into the backyard. So I think the, the placement of the garage and the workshop is a connector, I think is good. Personally, I think the length of the garage is fine. It sits at the setback line, so I'm okay with that. Having a little bigger garage just gives you room for a little bit more storage, and I think it's a good idea.
I agree. I agree with all that.
Yeah, I, I agree with all that as well, Stephen. I think that also the, the new windows and doors will obviously give you a better economy from, for heating and cooling, but also new doors and windows will make the house look better as well. Update the look of the house, except just like your, your window and door plan will make the house look better, although that's not really our consideration. But I, I agree, I'd support it as well. I think it's, I think it's well done.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I agree. It's a, it's a logical solution and simple and it's appropriate.
Okay, any other comments or if someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, is there any discussion before we take a vote? Okay, Claudia?
Holson?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Damon Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very nice presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Princeton.
We're looking forward to moving.
I, I hope that, I hope that people get a chance to see what you've done, or I'm, I'm trying to think of how to put that, but I hope that what the care that you've taken gets shared in some form so that other people can replicate it. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just. Okay, our last discussion of the evening is case Z twenty one dash one forty six, one forty Quaker Road, block, block ninety nine oh one, lot six in the R three zone. It's the Battlefield and Stony Brook area, Historic Settlement Historic District. Karen, are all the notices in order?
Yes, the board has jurisdiction to hear the matter tonight.
Okay. Derek, would you like to summarize your memo?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Nisha Gupta and Nora Dillon are the owners of one forty Quaker Road. It's located in the R three zone. It's also in the Princeton Battlefield and Stony Brook Settlement Historic District. They're seeking a C one variance to permit the raising of the existing house above the base flood elevation as a result of repeated flooding of the structure. The structure is located within the front yard setback, and the raising of the house is considered an increase in the existing degree of non compliance. The subject lot is non complying with regard to the required one hundred fifty foot lot depth, the existing seventy six point two. It's also non compliant with respect to the required front yard setback, which is twenty five feet, and the existing house is eleven point four feet. Approximately point eight eight acres of the one point two six acre lot is located within a FEMA designated flood zone. The applicant has obtained a base flood elevation certification from FEMA, which establishes that at seventy four point two feet. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant's home was, was flooded repeatedly, and they are seeking the C one variance to permit the raising of the house, five point seven feet above the existing first floor elevation to a new first floor elevation of eighty two feet, which will result in a new house, height of the house at approximately twenty eight feet, which will still comply with the maximum permitted height of thirty five feet. The variance is really that front yard setback requirement of twenty five feet where, as the existing is eleven point four, they're just asking to raise the house straight up. They're just asking to raise the house straight up. Um, that's the, the synopsis of my memo. The project was reviewed as it's in a historic zone by the Historic Preservation Commission and Elizabeth this year. And she will speak to that uh, that review. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to uh, address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Bridger? Okay, thank you. Ms. Kim, do you wanna summarize your memo, please?
Yes, thank you Chairman Cohen and members of the zoning board. Um, as mentioned, this property is located within the Princeton Battlefield and Stony Brook Settlement Historic District. The applicants came before HBC at their January tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. Uh, the property is located at the intersection of Mercer Road and Quaker Road. Uh, when the applicants came before HBC, they advised that they had recently purchased the property and due to the flooding from Hurricane Ida, which totally uh flooded their basement and also encroached into their first floor, that the property was uninhabitable. So um, their architect, I believe, had indicated that they needed to raise their building five point seven feet to really for the future um protection of the house uh for any anticipated flooding. Um, HBC um, supported this application uh, because obviously a historic property that floods is not worthy of historic preservation. So um, although they did have concerns about the height, they felt that it was warranted for them to support the this application. Um, they did note that if, if your board approves this application, that three considerations be uh made. And one of them is that the height of the building raising be verified by the municipal, uh, sorry, Princeton land use engineer. And also if the applicants would be willing to work with a HBC subcommittee on any future uh plantings, once the building is raised to just kind of mitigate the visual effects of the increased height and the foundations to help retain the original context of the building to the property. And also the applicants indicated that during this Ida flood, that there was a lot of water, I believe they said sixty percent of their property was flooded. And a lot of the water was coming from runoff from Mercer Road and adjacent property. Um, so the app, the um, HBC recommended they reach out to the municipal and land use engineer regarding this excess runoff onto their property. And also, um, they indicated that there was a culvert that didn't seem to be functioning well. So again, if they could reach out to the municipal engineer and discuss those to alleviate any excess flooding that would be imposed on their property. And I'm available for any questions that your board may have. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone have any questions of Ms. Kim? Okay, all right, um. Mr. Gupta, Ms. Dillon, um, do you wanna start your presentation?
Let me just, I'll just swear both of you, and do you both swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So uh, we purchased one forty Quaker Road on July eighth of last year. And so on September one, uh, we experienced Hurricane Ida. As Elizabeth said, the basement fully flooded to the ceiling. The basement was a uh, non-unfinished basement that housed largely utilities for the home and storage. Uh, but that flooded to the ceiling, and we had about between two and three feet of water in the entirety of the first floor of the home, as well as the house. And uh, I, I would say it's sixty percent or more of the, of the entire property uh was basically a lake. Like the house was completely surrounded by water, uh, largely from the Stony Brook front floodway that rose about sixteen to eighteen feet during the course of Hurricane Ida. Uh, but even since then, in, you know, if there are successive rainstorms uh on, you know, two, three day sequences, uh, the Stony Brook will flood such that we can see the top of it from our windows. And then on top of the runoff from the Mercer side, the, the whole house was, was flooded, uh, the, I'm sorry, the whole property was flooded. Um, so what we're asking to do is literally, as Derek and Elizabeth said, just raise the home so that we can create a space for floodwater to come and to recede. Um, that's all we're proposing at this point, uh, is just the raise, uh, so we can get the house up and, and complete that work.
Is it going to be just up on columns or are you gonna have a?
The foundation, so the house will be raised and the found, the existing foundation will be built up to meet where the new first floor will sit.
Okay, so that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, then the house will be finished off to keep it in the character that the house is today. We're not proposing any changes to the exterior of the home.
Okay, so the, 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 the base will be solid?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I thought that um, that you were gonna have some movers because to help the water come in.
Yeah, it'll be a solid foundation with smart gates. So basically the gates, there'll be, there's, they're not huge gates. The house is not gonna be up on stilts. It's gonna be a finished foundation, uh, but there'll be smart gates such that when the, when the floodwater does come, it can go into the open space underneath the home. So you don't have an issue with hydrostatic pressure potentially collapsing the foundation. And then when the water re- recedes, it'll go back out those smart gates. So those smart gates will be there, uh, but that's just designed for floodwater to come and go.
Are you going to, are you going to landscape around the base of the house? Any lan- any adding, any landscaping there to screen it a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, so we haven't put in the land, there's gonna be a subsequent set of plans that we'll send for the uh, for the approvals for the interior of the home, which will include landscaping around the house. So we haven't pro- put that yet. We haven't proposed those plans yet, but landscaping will be part of the second phase of this project.
Okay. And the other question I have, um the, on the uh, I'll call it the, the left rear of the house facing the en- if you're facing the entry, um, you've got five French doors in that area.
Yep.
You gonna have a deck out there?
Uh, so we haven't fully decided that yet. What's gonna happen once the house is, basically the goal at this point was because we haven't been in the home since September one, it's uninhabitable. Uh, we have three small kids. We're living in an apartment in Princeton. So the goal was just to try and get the house raised so that we can move on to the second phase.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Gupta, or the, I don't know how the board would feel, but are the recommendations from the HBC, are those acceptable to you and your wife?
Yeah, I think there were, there were three components that I'm happy to reach out. I mean, I was ready to reach out to the town engineer, talk about the culvert. I believe the town put in the culvert some years ago, uh, and sort of talk with the engineer about that. Uh, we're open to working with HPC on landscaping. Um, and Elizabeth, I forget the, the first one. The first one was about the, the town engineer determining the height of the raise, right?
Just for him to confirmify that that
Yeah, so.
appropriate height.
Yeah, that's fine. Just for context on how we got the number of five point seven, so the FEMA floodplain frankly is outdated at this point because Ida exceeded the, the record, the number that FEMA has on their floodplain. So we, I hired an architect and an engineer, uh, both of whom looked at the property, looked at the floodplain records, looked at the actual sort of flood marks from our property and came up with that number, taking into account uh about a two-foot buffer that I think is required under some regulation as well from where you expect the top of the floodbar to be. And so that's how we came up with it, but we're happy to have the town engineer look at it too.
Chairman?
Yes.
I did, uh, just for the record, um, when I was doing the memo, I worked with Jim Purcell, the land use engineer, and reviewed the engineering data that was submitted by the applicants and the flood information to, you know, verify that, that proposed height did work, but uh, so he's aware of it and he's kind of reviewed my memo when we were putting it together. I didn't wanna proceed down this path without some kind of assurance that it was gonna be raised sufficiently enough to deal with any future flood.
So he is comfortable with it then?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Okay.
I have two questions that have nothing to do with uh zoning, but one is, has the house been repeatedly flooding for all of its life?
I, I mean, we've only owned it since July of last year, uh, so I'm not sure, but I suspect it has because I mean, that floodway rises so quickly based on a runoff from upstream.
The second question is, how long will it, how long would it take to raise the house and make it habitable?
Oh, well, the raise doesn't make it habitable. The raise, uh, if we can start the raise uh at the end of this month, that, the raise itself and the new foundation work arguably, if, if everything goes well and quickly, could be done in a month, month and a half. Um, but the house doesn't have um, any utilities except for power, minimal power. So we'll have to, you know, we'll have to, we'll have to start that second part of it. So I, I guess to answer your question more directly. Um, one, I'm not sure. Two, if we get into the house this summer, I think we'd be ecstatic, but I think given delays because of the pandemic, supplies, it's very possible that we may not get across this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just had a question as well. Um, I've been in that house. It's, it's a very old house, isn't it?
Yeah, it's actually, um, it's, it, the original, yeah, the original seventeen seventy, yeah, the original. Yeah, the original, the, the middle part of the house, the middle two rooms are the original part of the house, I think was built in seventeen twenty. The section of the house closer to Quaker Road was then built after that, I think some point probably in the eighteen hundreds. And then the section of the house furthest away was a nineteen ninety-nine renovation.
Right, yeah, 'cause I remember those, like either some brick flooring or stone flooring in there somewhere, I think, and
It's all uh, it's all wood, like wide plank wood flooring.
Okay, so my other question was this, so with the basement, so if water's gonna go in and out of there, so it's not gonna be a finished basement, are you gonna just have utilities hung from the from the floorboards in order to keep them out of the water?
The utilities will be relocated to a space, basically the equivalent to be utility closet on the first floor. That is now currently the steps to get to the existing basement. So they're relocated there, and then the existing basement will be filled in, and there'll be a new slab at ground level. And then the space from the new slab up will be open for water to come and go.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything, you, anything else you'd like to add?
Or, nope, we're all set.
His Kim had her hand up, but
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to uh mention that there was discussion at HPC about possibly moving the house on the property, but the applicants indicated that actually the high point is where the house exists now. So um, there was discussion about it. We talked about those movers because um there was the barn over at the Prince Friends School, which is also sits on Quaker Road, which they have had flooding in the past, and they put those movers in. So that's actually um typical for properties. I believe this is probably classified as a C one. And your engineer would probably state that where they actually need to put those floodways in. So I think that the applicant actually has um done their homework and, you know, looked at other options, and that's one of the reasons that HPC was supportive of them, you know, raising it at its location.
Thank you. Okay, um, if you have no further comments, uh, the board members, the applicant will open this to public comment. Okay, um, Claudia, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this?
There are no hands.
No hands, okay. We'll close the public portion and go into executive session. Um. Do you wanna add anything before we uh, discuss it amongst ourselves and the, and the audience and uh come to a vote?
No, I mean, the only thing I would say is apparently the building permit's been approved, so if that helps you with your decision, great.
You have a shovel in your hand? Okay, all right, um, let's go into executive session. Board members, comments, questions, motion?
I have um, a question for uh Mr. Bridger. So, the only reason they need a C variance is because they're raising the house.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is one of those situations we were discussing early on in the meeting.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments?
I, I would support this. It makes sense. It, it has to be done.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And the only thing I would add is um, I see, maybe I missed it. I see no mention of of the flood vents in the drawing. So, you know, I, I assume they're gonna be positioned in a way that aligns with the windows above and things like that. And um, I, I think there's, there'll, there'll be the, a, a, a certain number that's required for the amount of water, but um that, that's the only thing.
Sorry, I think that was just a timing thing. When we submitted the drawings for this process, uh, it was just before we had finally decided on the floodgate. So the set of drawings that went to the building department for the building permit, permit had the floodgates in them.
Okay.
But if you, if the commission wants those, I can, I can send those along also.
Yeah. Bernice, do you wanna see those?
Um, uh, no, I, it's just a, a, a note that they've acknowledged that they're going in and um, if, if they're in the final drawings, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay, any other uh, comments? I think this is a great idea. I mean, I think it has to be done. Um, okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, they've been through a lot already. I think that they need to get going and get this done. For sure.
And is the motion include the HPC recommendations?
Yes, it should.
Yes, okay.
I mean, Mr. Davich, do, I assume you feel it does?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry. And George, you seconded this?
Yes, I'll second it, Stein.
Thank you. Okay, Claudia?
Yes.
Davich?
Yes.
Boy?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Miss Ten?
Yes.
Yes.
George?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Cohen, Chairman Cohen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Good luck. I hope you get in there. I hope you get in there this year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Okay, um, we have one more item on the agenda. It's a discussion of a, or, an ordinance, the first reading was, I guess, at the last council meeting with the possibility of disbanding sprab. And I think it's something that we should discuss because it will impact our board. So, um, Derek, can you sort of summarize what's going on with the ordinance?
Uh, excuse me, do we need the court reporter?
No, I don't think we do.
Yes, thank you. Good night.
The other question is, do, is this a closed session or just a discussion?
No, it's not. It's an open.
Okay, Derek?
So there's been an ordinance introduced by council to uh eliminate sprab. The thought is to replace it with a board that would look at applications earlier in the review process and then um also kind of tailor it more to, to, to what it actually has become in, in recent years, which is really concentrated on architecture. They feel there's enough professionals and consultants that look at all the technical aspects of the site plan, but there was still some council members were interested in looking at the architectural design of the buildings, um, the proposed buildings and, as well as uh the process, you know, they thought it was better to get out in front, whereas sprab currently is the last board that hears an application or reviews an application before the hearing. So at that point, it's, it's difficult to make uh, big changes um, to a plan, so. And then the other option is, or the other idea was that it really should be the planning board that approves minor site plans without variances, um, which the ordinance currently allows sprab to do um, and historic preservation, and I think it's at odds with the MLUL. At least that's what the municipal attorney has advised us, so.
So, so these, so if, if sprab were to be eliminated, then the, the planning board, I guess the way the ordinance for the, the planning board would have, would appoint a committee uh, to review the application.
But Derek, that would just be for planning board applications, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, so then they would, the planning board would approve, approve or review that and then pass on that to the council?
No, they would review it. They would act as sprab does now. They would meet earlier in the process. They would have select members from possible planning board members with expertise. meet earlier in the process. They would have select members from possible planning board members with expertise in architecture where they could get, uh, people in the community that, um, are architects but don't necessarily do work in town because there's some thought that it's a conflict for architects to be on SPROB and do work in town and review projects. Um, so it would be done at the earlier, um, part of the process. So where the plans aren't fully baked and there's some opportunity to for constructive, uh, dialogue to make changes to the, the process. So they would make that committee, they would, they could, you know, classify site plans. Um, it would be a committee of the planning board. The zoning board could do the same thing. However, you know, we have historic preservation that would review most of the stuff that happens in historic zones, which would be most of the downtown. Um, and then the other stuff that's not an historic zone, we could appoint a committee, but, um, I mean, or we could just go with the staff and the professional consultants reports of reviewing the uh, site plans that we get. But, you know, most of the site plans like we get are in historic district downtown. And we see them as an FAR question, maybe in the township, um, so.
So, so basically, the, the planning board is going to be, is going to act as SPROB in a sense. They're going to have a committee which is going to do the same thing that SPROB did.
Similarly, yep. I think with a little more emphasis on architectural design and, uh, they're looking at possible design guidelines and stuff like that, so.
Keep in mind that the zoning board, I mean, there's a very limited amount of site plans you do look at. You get them only when it is not a single family home, but it needs, uh, what we'll call a D variance. For the floor ratio, the height, the variances of the planning board legally cannot approve that. And if it ends, and if it happens to be, um, a commercial or retail or multifamily, then it does come to the zoning board and then that does have a site plan associated with it. So as Derek pointed out, yes, the zoning board could create its own review committee if it wanted to. Um, or it could rely on the staff memos, which essentially what you do now, yes, you do get, get a SPROB memo as well, but, um, as I, as I understand this proposed ordinance, the thought is that there are a number of your staff and there's also consulting professionals too, so that, that would likely provide, uh, both boards with a depth of review.
Because nothing, there's nothing in that ordinance that defines what happens to an application that requires zoning board action.
Right.
So, so how would that, how would that be reviewed? The applicant wouldn't necessarily have to submit to a.
No, they, they wouldn't. No, they wouldn't. What they would do is, um, if the zoning board decides that, that it wants to create its own review committee, that the board could do that. Uh, or, uh, if, if a site plan came to you in association with, um, the use variance or D variance, you would review it with the assistance of all the memos that you would get from, if you want the planning memo, you would get that. You would get your memo from Derek. If it needed engineering review, you would get an engineering memo.
Shaintry Commission, Environmental.
Everything. So it simply would not be filtered through, uh, site plan review committee or a subdivision site plan review.
But this, this design review that, that you mentioned, Derek, would it be subject to that?
No, no.
So.
That would just be the planning board's domain.
So that would, so the, the comments that, that SPROB made relative to design would not be, uh, would not be required.
Well, the SPROB, you know, SPROB wouldn't exist anymore. We wouldn't.
SPROB wouldn't exist. And that function that SPROB took on would go away when it came to the zoning board, but not the planning board.
Yes, sir. And I think the, the key is it's, it's supposed to be a site plan review advisory board. You know, and I think they want to look more it's, it's often takes a look at the architecture, but that's, you know, not their whole domain. I think this way there's engineers that look at the site plan. There's a stormwater management engineer that looks at, there's traffic engineers that look at these issues and um, I think the planning board still wants to have a foot that would look at the, uh, you know, foot in the door that would look at the architectural designs and then possibly, you know, they can submit any board they want, but that's the, the conversations that I've heard.
Derek, the, the architectural design, whatever that criteria is, would that be a separate ordinance? Or would that?
Would have to be, yeah. I mean.
Right. And then that means, I guess, well, then I guess the zoning board, when that ordinance comes out, the zoning board could discuss.
Repeat that, Karen?
Would the, would the wording allow the zoning board also to rely on that? Meaning if they get a site plan, they're looking at it, they said, we want to, yeah, we would like to consider these architectural design criteria.
So then we, we'd have to review it based on that?
Oh, yeah. Well, I mean, I guess the question would be when an ordinance is presented for comment, then the zoning board says, looks good to us, but we wanted to apply to us too. You know, we want to take advantage of that criteria for, for site plans that come to us. So I don't know why, I don't know why that, you know, I don't think that would, would be an issue.
No.
So that it would simply be either the zoning board itself that looked at that criteria and as part of its review could use that as well, as well as all the staff comments that they would have, which you normally get anyway. You get all those memos.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Made your projects. You did get a memo for, for engineering, for planning, for zoning.
Well, which we'd still get. Yeah, I understand.
Environmental, everything. So the question would be, does this, it, and, and perhaps the way to look at it is, is to wait and see if an ordinance is presented with architectural design criteria. And once that comes out, if the zoning board feels that having its own subcommittee to look at that criteria is a good idea, then you could look at it then. But right now there isn't, there, there is no such ordinance right now that is setting forth architectural design criteria, so.
Which really is, it was something that SPROB did do. I mean, they may, they may have done it, uh, you know, uh, I don't want to say unauthorized, but they made comments relative to design and site layout and things like that. But an applicant would not be obligated for, to, would not, it would not obligate them to submit to an ar, I'll, I'll call it an architectural review on a zoning board application.
Well, not now, yeah.
On a planning board application, it would, but on a zoning board application, it would.
But the, Derek, right now, that ordinance doesn't really talk about architectural design criteria, does it?
No, it doesn't. It just strictly eliminates SPROB and touches on all the sections of the code where SPROB has a role and eliminates that and it substitutes planning board subcommittee. And then.
A, a planning board subcommittee, but not a zoning board subcommittee. And, and, um, my only concern is if we took it upon ourselves to do that and then the planning board did the same thing, you know, it's two different, two different groups. I mean, not necessarily reviewing the same application, but reviewing things, again, different people reviewing similar functions.
You know, my, my initial reaction to this and, um, up till now, we've, we've had municipal staff and consultants review applications, produce reports. We've also had SPROB and SPROB has come up with things that other parties have not come up with. And I found the SPROB reports useful, beneficial, and many of the items they come up with, the developers readily agree with. Oh, yeah, that was a good idea. So, um, my initial reaction, I'm uncomfortable with eliminating SPROB where I can understand probably the exert, assertion of duplication of efforts. But if SPROB comes, is value added, which I believe it has been, um, I'd hate to see it go.
Any discussion on that? So what would, what would council like from, would council like anything from us or we choose to submit something?
It's, it's up to the board. You can, you know, any, just like, uh, the planning board has to comment on it for council. We can comment, we can write a memo or, you know, encapsulate our concerns. Or do nothing. I mean, you know, whatever the board wishes.
When is the second reading of this?
Uh, it's the end of the month.
We'd have to have something done very quickly.
Yeah, I believe it's like the twenty eighth or something like that.
Two weeks. Well, board members, what do you think?
Michael's memo was pretty good. How about just modifying that and send it on?
So that was a good starting point. Yeah, I think he, he touched on some points that seem to be pretty relevant.
Michael, do you want to put something together and circulate it and we can talk about it next week?
Okay.
All right. All right, good. Good.
I, I'd like to make a comment on my, um, request to Michael, actually, which is some specifics as to the benefit added. If, if you have any without, you know, a major excavation. That would, that would help me evaluate this.
Yeah, and I'm also curious, I, I believe there was discussion at SPROB about this. Is, is that something that can be circulated?
I don't, I don't know if there was, they didn't do a report. There was discussion at the last SPROB meeting, um.
Okay. I, I thought maybe there are minutes or something.
I, there, there are, but I'm sure they're not done yet.
Well, to George's request, uh, I'll probably just ask Derek and Claudia if they can dig out some SPROB reports. Cause I.
The planning board would be the, they do the SPROB reports, so that would be carried. You know, we can reach out to her and if you want to give us, they do one on every application. So if you want to give us an idea what you're looking for, we're happy to do it. And I just checked that the hearing is on the twenty fourth at council.
Yeah.
And our, our next, our next meeting is what date?
Twenty sixth.
Yeah, that's not going to work.
So that's not going to work.
It's Monday.
But maybe I'm misunderstanding. I mean, at times we get SPROB reports on applications.
Sure. Now, I just don't know what you want. I mean, they write a report on every university project, every commercial project, so you tell me what you want and I'll get it. Um, I'm just.
Okay.
If you want. So, you know, one of it, the idea is, is duplication of review, um, which there was some concern about that, like the, the hotel went both through HPC and SPROB. You know, so that happens on a major site plan. So I think there was some concern about dup, as I said earlier, duplication of efforts and to make the process a little smoother and it's, it's become more architectural centric than it to initial guidelines were, you know.
Used to be, okay.
Yeah, so.
Um, a suggestion to anybody that's interested, um, the planning board is taking this up. Same thing, review the ordinance and comment tomorrow night. So if you want, you know, if you're interested in hearing what questions they ask, you could, if you have the time, tune in on that.
Yeah.
I think it's, it's the last item on their agenda. So I'm not quite sure what, what time it would be.
There is a university application on before, but it's pretty, you know, there's no, there's just a signed variance. It's not a controversial application, so.
Yeah.
It shouldn't take all night, but.
Is the board just going to hear the application or are they going to participate? Because if we have a quorum, then we have to notice the meeting.
Good point, Claudia.
Yeah, everybody's free to watch, but if, if a quorum of you decide you all want to join in and have a colloquy, then you have now, you have now convened a meeting of the zoning board, which you didn't intend to do.
No.
I have to caution, of course, everyone is free to watch from their, from their home, but, um.
Keep it on.
What happens if you watch the recording? Then, then it doesn't matter?
Absolutely, watch the, you can watch the video.
Ever.
I, I did want to ask a question and I don't know if this is a solution, but it sounds as if the consensus is SPROB was providing like a layer of architect, I mean, basically architectural review for the site plan. And if it is anticipated that there are going to be now architectural review criteria, at that juncture, I don't know why the zoning board could not take advantage of that. If you decided you wanted your own subcommittee, now you have specific criteria. And that subcommittee would look at the project, apply that criteria, generate its report for the zoning board. But until such time as there is criteria, I mean, it's, it's, you know, two, one way to look at it is that's also an issue for SPROB that the concern seems to be now that they want, that there's a desire for criteria. So don't duplicate the effort staff makes. And as far as architectural review goes, and you stop me if I'm wrong, Derek, that, um, now there will be ordinance criteria. Because once you have it in an ordinance, it's a lot harder for a developer to say, well, I want to get it approved, but I don't agree. You know, I, I don't know where you're getting these comments from. This is not what I want to do. You're changing my entire concept here. And what is that based on? What, what, what are you, what are you relying on for that? So one way to look at it is if there's actually an ordinance now with criteria, that, that strengthens the extent of the review for both, um, whatever subcommittee planning board has and also if zoning board decides. You know, may, that, that subcommittee for zoning board may not meet very often. It's only going to meet when a site plan of any size comes to the zoning board. And it's not that that can't happen. It did. There was the hotel and there had been other applications where because of the variances they needed, had to come to this board. So it seems to me that having ordinance criteria is really more the, maybe that's more the focus now than, um, whether the actual SPROB board has constituted whether that continues or whether in fact the focus is on some architectural criteria, which as we discussed, the zoning board could also take advantage. Say, well, it's same criteria, same town. So we want to look at that as well. And at that point, then maybe the zoning board does say we, we do want to have a subcommittee and that subcommittee's focus is going to be on that criteria. Not, 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 not to duplicate the review of the staff. Does mean you're not going to redo an engineering review or the zoning review or planning review. So I don't know, Derek, uh, if you think that's what's coming down the road now, that if SPROB is disbanded, then.
I think there'll be something in its place. I mean, there's definitely intent of the, the planning board. They want to look at applications, but they want to have have it start at a much earlier process where they can really give people advice at that point. And if you need to be turned in a different direction and you haven't spent tens of thousands of dollars on design work and then, you know, you have a couple of weeks before the hearing when you go to SPROB. Tens of thousands of dollars on design work and then, you know, you have a couple of weeks before the hearing when you go to sprab and. At that point, it's too late. So, I mean, I think there's a need for some kind of review board. It's just what shape it'll take and, you know. Council's decided that to go in this direction.
Well, since, since the zoning board is not going to meet until after. Council's meeting on Monday night and if in fact it is on their agenda for its second reading. If there's some comment you want to provide, I guess it's got to come, you know, it's going to generate at tonight's meeting.
Is the, at the next hearing, will there be, will the council have public comment?
Yeah, that is the public comment period that when the introduction, it's introduced and then the, the public comment period is after goes to the planning board. Would be the twenty fourth where you could talk about the actual proposal ordinance.
So I guess, I guess if we can't. It may be a little bit tough tonight to put something together. So maybe it would be. Just board members, if they want to speak to this, they could join in at the, uh, either tomorrow night or the twenty fourth. Twenty, you know, whatever.
No, just, just keep in mind, we, we cannot have a quorum. You want to be watching, that's okay, but. Cannot have a quorum of members speaking because it'd be very difficult to argue that that is not a meeting now. I mean, you're all. Speaking together, you're obviously there. So even if it is via Zoom.
Is it three, three members, Karen?
Yeah, three. So I mean, either you can decide tonight that three people are gonna. Be, be watching via Zoom and raise comments for the board. Three people, one person, whatever you want to do, but. We don't want, we don't want that situation to arise where.
No, I understand.
We inadvertently have a form of our board and they're all together and they're all on the Zoom screen. Comment and talking about it. Having, having a colloquy now with the.
Well, we just, again, we're not. Um, uh, you know, maybe a distinction, maybe it's, it's indistinguishable, but. If we're just all in it, if, if several of our members attend, listen in and choose to comment. And there were more than three of us to comment. That constitutes a, a comment by the zoning board.
It's, it could, it could. Cause whenever you convene and we have a forum of you. We run the risk that this is now deemed a meeting. And of course, we didn't notice for it was. You didn't intend to have a meeting. You just wanted to listen in and, and see what comment was. So.
Is there any way we can designate Michael as our spokesperson to? Go ahead and speak.
Sure.
I'm not sure that that. Is advantageous for us. I think the questions, as, as you can tell, the, the few. Comments I've made tonight are very few compared with. The more technical and deep thought. Questions from Steve and a couple of other people. So. I really do plan on listening tomorrow night. And I don't think I'll be able to form some. Technically valuable questions.
It doesn't really sound like we're gonna have much influence on it anyhow, one way or the other, if it's gonna go forward on Monday.
You never know, you know?
You never know. Yeah, that's true. I, and I.
Well, what if, what if Derek, what if Derek simply presented or passed along the zoning board has raised these questions? And you're not necessarily suggesting answers. You just have raised some questions. Who will, you know, will, will there continue to be? A review of architectural design? Who would be doing that? Will there be criteria? I mean, just a set of questions that either generates a further discussion? Or, or doesn't.
Or the zoning, just generally the zoning board's role in this whole process. Given that the planning board is, is possibly going to put a subcommittee together.
Well, the zone, I mean, there's, there, I don't think there's any doubt the zoning board can create a subcommittee of its own. I said, there's no doubt the zoning board could create its own subcommittee. It wants to.
Yeah, I know, but the, the memo, the ordinance itself references the planning board and a potential subcommittee. It says nothing to.
Because, because. I don't want to hazard a percentage here, but let's just say that the majority of site plans go to the plane. And that the zoning board. Role, yes, you have the same powers as the planning board. If you get an application, it needs certain. D category variances, then yes, you have the same power as the planning board to review the site. It's just that it doesn't happen too often. So the focus, yes, is on the planning board because they get a lot of site plan. And so that's why the, I believe that's why the, this mention keeps coming up in the ordinance, the planning board, planning board. But there's no reason why the zoning board can't do that. It's just a question of what role do you want that subcommittee to play? So that it doesn't duplicate what the staffs do. You said that you want the review committee. And as Derek says, they're meeting with applicants at the beginning of the process. I, I assume Derek that that would include or would have to, wouldn't it? If the applicant is told. We need bunch of D variances, height and floor ratio and other things. Then that initial meeting with.
And I'm not sure you can do that because it's almost, it can't be a concept review with it, with it use variance, you know? And that's, it's different with the zoning board than it is with the planning board. So. I mean, the planning board, everything's permitted as of right. You may have a bulk variance here and there, but. You can build your shopping center, you can build your apartment building, but we want you to shift this. Elevation down a bit and bring this one up or, you know, move this part of the building back and. That's not, I mean, a zoning board doesn't typically get into those discussions when you're asking. Geez, can I put a nuclear reactor on Nassau Street and get a D one use variance for it? You know, or a gas station on Hodge Road. So. That's, that's a difference. That, I mean, we're not as affected by it. I mean, last year we heard. The, the only planning board hearing I can remember was the hot, the hotel.
You mean the site plan where we?
Site plan, yeah, excuse me. And. We heard the, uh, the tennis club. We had an extension on that the year before. So typically, we're going to get a variance. We may get FAR variances. If they're in the HPC, if they're downtown, we'll have the, the review by the HPC, which. You know, has guidelines and designs, some design standards, um, which I think they write a good report and they provide a good service to us. So. Um, but if you're more concerned with the role of sprab with the planning board. Cause that's really ninety, I would say ninety nine percent of the scrap does. Review application that goes to the planning board, not, not the zoning board. So.
Okay.
And really, if, if you think back to applications, which did have a site plan and did come in front of you. Because they involved. A D variance, like a used variance. A lot of your discussion was focusing on the use. Yes, you also looked at, yeah, impact or the facade and, and other things. But a lot of the discussions that you would have had appropriately would be. Well, should we allow this? Should we allow this use or not? And Derek's point is, well, taking the planning boards, it's already allowed. That's why it's in front of the planning board. What comes in front of them are permitted uses except they need a bulk parents like. Yes, you, you can build a shopping center, but. Shopping, the developer says. Except on this side here, like I can't comply with that or I want to pull it further to the street than I'm allowed. So that's all about variance and the planning board get away with the positive and negative criteria. For the zoning board, your role is for variances that. These are now much greater deviation. And that falls to you to consider. The standard for it and whether it should be approved. So I kind of think that Derek's point makes sense that the impact of this, I don't, I don't know. That it's going to have a great impact on this point. And if in the future, you say. We still feel that we need some kind of a review that would benefit for our applications. You could do that. You could create your own review committee and say, this is what our committee does. Now. Either that committee looks at the, this, but, but again, if it's the architecture now. Then the question is, is there going to be some kind of review criteria that planning boards apply? Then zoning board would say, well, we would apply the same. Yeah, we're going to rely on that criteria as well. But. It, it could be, we could go through the entire year this year and you're not going to have a site. Because the applications coming to you. Are not of a nature that they need site plan review. They just need a height variance or FAR or. The use is not allowed. Now, I'm not saying that you don't end up finding out, you know, what's it gonna look like?
Yeah, I'm confused. I'm, I'm not sure what you're recommending. Are you recommending something?
No, I'm, I, what I'm really saying is that I don't think the elimination of the scrap board is going to have much impact on the zoning board. That's basically, that is what I'm saying. That I don't.
You know, I think what you're saying, and, and I'll just say it in a different way. As far as my concern or, or I'm, I'm sort of exaggerating. The actual value of scrap to us and the actual sheer number of times. We get a, a scrap report. Which is what I'm hearing from you and, and Derek, which, you know, I take that as being true. Then it gets to the point, not the point, but some of the questions I think. Were concerns more that Steve had, which is, well, what do we do? In case of this. That type of thing, which is, you know, that's, those are different. As I say, almost technical questions than my just kind of general statement, we value scrap. So I, I take what Karen says and I take what Derek says that we really don't use scrap that much.
Yeah, okay.
That's what's being said.
Okay. Do we do, and I'm just throwing this idea out, would it, would something simple, as simple as saying? The zoning board. Wants to, wants a clarification how our role would fit into this new situation?
Well, I did ask the municipal attorney, because I, I, I said, well, can the zoning board take advantage of the? The new planning board committee? And we can't, um, we'd have to do our own. Committee. To do that, which, again, it kind of makes, it kind of makes sense. I mean, we're dealing with use variances and. You can, you can kind of discuss things a little more fluidly when it's, it's a permitted use and it's. Where ours is like, no, the FAR is not, is too high, you know, or the, the, the use isn't permitted. And how do you get around that? We can't have concept reviews. And. You know, if you think that we need additional reviews of the site plan itself, uh, you know, I think. You could discuss that. Um, we could look at a committee here, but I, you know, there's an engineering review memo. I. I also write that with the, the engineer. Um, there's a stormwater management. Engineer that reviews it. There's a traffic committee that reviews it. There's a shady commission that reviews it. There's. Environmental commission that reviews it. And then there's traffic consultants that, that also come in when we have certain size applications on a minor site plan that would review. The traffic as well. So. But bottom line is we're not that influenced by it, but if you feel personally that it's a board that's worthwhile. You know, and personally you can address the planning board unless the board has a strong opinion one way or the other. And I'd be. You know, happy to. To do whatever you would like me to do to move that along.
I'm just trying to get an idea. What would happen in, in the event we do get one of these applications? Obviously, we're going to get all the sub memos and the. You know, planning and engineering and everything else, which would be great. And Elizabeth. Then I guess, could we? I don't think we can do this. So can we take it upon ourselves to, to discuss with the applicant? Our concerns? I mean, I guess we're doing it as the applicant, we're doing it in real time. We're not doing it prior to a submittal.
Yeah, that, that runs into that, and I'll let Karen chime in, but it's kind of like a concept review on a use variance, you know?
Right.
You, you can't do it.
There's no way to do it, right? There's no concept at the point that. They come to us, the cons, it's not a concept anymore. It's.
And I don't think you could have more than three members, right? Of the boards. Karen might have to have outside. Architects or, you know, and that was another issue. Staff feels uncomfortable dealing with architects that work in town that are. On boards, you know? Steve recuses himself from working in town and.
Karen?
Yes.
Um, there's someone, uh, I don't know who this is, someone, I guess a member of the public who has been listening and has their hand raised. And I'm not sure how to handle that, whether we allow that person to speak or.
Well, I, I think if they have a question or a comment, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we are.
Is this a good time as far as the chair is concerned?
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Here we go.
It's Dale Mead who needs to unmute.
Almost made it.
Uh, hello. I've been listening in and. I have a couple of comments I'd just like to forward to you because I was thinking as, as you were discussing tonight. During, we've been for the past two years. Stuck in this COVID communication crisis where we're having difficulty communicating among ourselves. And I see that all the time in some of these meetings where. For example, some, uh, an ordinance is, uh, introduced at one meeting. And then the, the very next meeting, uh, it's acted upon. And a number of people, you know, the residents. Have been concerned about some of these things moving too quickly with not enough discussion among. Uh, the people who are responsible for making decisions. And I think some things have been passed too quickly without. Without understanding what all the unintended consequences might be. So I, what I heard tonight from, uh, th- this group is, uh, yes, you have some. Things you'd like to discuss more, you'd like to have a meeting. And after thinking about it and this, the initial discussions tonight. And then you'd like to be able to communicate that to the, um, the council. And so I was suggest, I'm trying to think myself whether I personally would get up at the council meeting and make a. A public comment, uh, asking that they. Uh, the extend or delay the decision on this matter and perhaps others as well. And make it a general practice to at least allow. Uh, one extra meeting so that people would have a, a chance to. Uh, hear about something, have meetings in, say the zoning board or. Uh, hear about something, have meetings in, say, the zoning board or the planning board or whatever other board. And then be able to have that that group provide input to the council's decision. What you're struggling with now is kind of a parliamentary procedure about how you, how you can't quite. Get input to the people who are, you shouldn't be providing input to. So that's just my simple. Um, suggestion is that you think about perhaps tonight, you could have a sense of the zoning board that. Uh, express that you'd like additional time to discuss this matter and. Form a a recommendation to the council, and that would require, you know, that they, you know. Not take a final decision on this matter after our next meeting next week. That's that's my only suggestion. And if somehow this doesn't get presented in. By others, I might consider making a public comment myself along the, these lines that the council should establish a. A policy of not, you know, having a meeting on a Thursday and then on Tuesday. Taking a final decision, that's been done on on some items, and that's not good policy. That leads to mistakes. Yeah, that's all I have to say. And again, good luck and thanks for going through. And dealing with all these difficulties during the time, I think, with COVID and doing things on a Zoom screen, terrible way to do business. You must agree with that. We all agree on that. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your comments. Well. What do we do? We're sort of up against the wall here because we can't act as a group. Um, other than putting a statement together, I guess, that would go to. The council. Immediately, right? I mean, something that they would get and just, you know, a memo from us or something. Um, basically saying that, you know, we've discussed it, but we didn't come to a conclusion. I mean, they wouldn't be under any obligation to. To delay the vote or do anything like that, that would purely be up to them, right?
Correct, correct. Remember also the the planning board. You know, whenever, whenever there's a land use ordinance, it gets sent to them anyway for review for compliance with master plan. So it would have come to them in any case, you know, they have a particular interest in this because. As Derek pointed out, I mean, what is it, 99% of site plans, grab reviews are for the planning board. So planning board already has a particular interest, but they would be reviewing it anyway. So by sending the order, by saying to the zoning board as well, you know, if you have a comment, then sure, give it to us. I'm I'm not sure they anticipated comments or not, but.
Yeah, the meeting tomorrow night is a review of consistency with this ordinance with the master plan, and then. The the time for public comment would be at the actual council meeting.
And so the only, the the next time the council would hear what we say would be after our next meeting.
Well, unless somebody went to the January. Twenty-fourth meeting.
You know, I.
If there was a consensus, or there was a, if there were a set of common concerns that the board had, the zoning board had.
Hey, you know, I I I agree, I think legally, what you said about. The planning board meeting tomorrow and it's not. A purpose for public comment, my experience on ordinances that they're asked to discuss. Uh, the chair and the attorney. Allows the public to comment. I've personally done it, even though, you know, Mia didn't want the public to comment. And 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 really, the the chair and the attorney said, no, we will allow public comment. I know there will be people there tomorrow to make public comment. And I'd be surprised if they're not allowed to comment, because historically. Ms. Wilson and and Jerry Mueller have allowed it.
No, you're exactly right, Michael. I just think that. The subject of that meeting is review of the master plan, and if you want to talk about the criteria, it's whether scrap is a good or bad thing. You know, that might be better done at council, but you, I mean, obviously, you can, you know, request to speak publicly at both meetings and you probably. You're you're correct, that has been the practice at the planning board.
Yeah, yeah, it 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 has been. But we'll, we'll see. I. I know that there will be some people doing it, but I I know some of the planning board members. Have their own questions, some, they don't, they need to get an understanding of. What this is about, what it means. Um, uh, the what is kind of questions, does it mean this going forward, you know? Because they, you know, what what is this possible new? Commissioner board that might be for, they don't, they don't know. The the individual planning board members. Um, so there'll be some of those basic root questions asked by board members tomorrow. That's why I say it'd be good to tune in.
Yeah, no, I'll listen, but I'm just trying to think how we, what can we do? What can we do to affect the discussion at this point? We don't have enough, we don't have enough time to formulate anything, you know, come to a consensus on on how we would like to proceed.
Unless we don't want to proceed.
I guess I'd like to have my questions answered. Um, we're here a little bit more in detail about what they're planning.
Yeah, I think that's the question, is is we're looking for more clarification about what's envisioned for our. Role with this change, is that?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So until we have that, we we don't have more questions.
Right.
So is it possible that we're asking them to address the zoning board's use of. A committee or whatever it is in the ordinance?
I'm not sure.
Well, Donna, I mean, the ordinance would get rid of SPRAB.
Right.
And it would allow the planning board, well, I did, I guess it it, I know the preface of the ordinance talked about having a.
A subcommittee.
Yeah, but also like a very early review with the applicant. Which is what Derek touched on, but basically. Because it would be a subcommittee of the planning board, well, then it reviews applications in front of the planning board. That subcommittee of the planning board is not going to review applications that are going to the zoning. So I think either the zoning board could follow suit. So let's see how that's working out. We we might do that, too. We'll make our own subcommittee. So if that's a question that wants to be, that you want an answer to.
I mean, it's it's to, the the ordinance disbands SPRAB.
Yep.
And and mentions a potential role of the planning board to to basically replace SPRAB. Can we simply say that we'd like some discussion of? The zoning board function? When and if SPRAB is disbanded?
Well.
Well, zoning zoning board function, I'm not sure what that means.
Okay, not zoning board function. The the ordinance says, the ordinance is to disband SPRAB. And it says a subcommittee may be formed by the planning board to provide, again, you know. Conceptual reviews.
All right, well, I mean, as as we discussed, it's hard, it would be hard for that subcommittee to do a conceptual review. For zoning board application, because everything keeps coming, will come back to, well, kind of like how it looks, except. You know, the board may not give you the use variance, or they may not give you the height. Because what you wanted is very tall and a lot of people may not like that. So. I think the point Derek was making was a good one, which is the nature of. The variances that would trigger a site plan coming to you, the very nature of them is such that. I don't know how anybody can have a helpful early review. I mean, staff could meet and say, you're asking for some big things here, you know, you know that, right? You're asking for some, a very tall building. Lots of FAR. We we don't really know that you're going to get any of that from the zoning board.
Yeah, it's out of sequence, right?
Well, that's 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 kind of the problem, so that's why. I don't, certainly, certainly, that.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask you something, if if if, and I understand exactly what you're saying, I mean, basically. People are coming to the planning board early for some criteria, I won't say criteria, for some discussion. And then they'll make a submission. To us, we get it when the plans are developed and everything, and the developer has. Decided what he wants and then comes to us for our approval or denial.
Correct.
And so, so we. We would have to make a decision, would we allow, would we allow people? And I don't know if this is even doable, to come informally before us or a subcommittee that we. That we create to do basically the same thing, you know, somebody coming to us and saying. You know, I want to put an addition on my house or whatever it is that that is going to be. You know, twice the FAR or something like that. And, you know, again, the same type of thing. But allows us to do it early on. I mean, I don't, or else we have really, there's nothing we can, we just sit back and let it happen around us. There's nothing we can do. And I'm not saying we should do anything, but the issue is, do we just allow it to continue as it is with the. Mention of the planning board and the subcommittee and nothing in regards to what we do.
Do we just want a clarification that we could do it, too, if we wanted to?
I mean, that's, that's an option that you could request is that you you have the same opportunity that the planning board does to have have a board, but. The points that we raise, I mean, the first thing the developer wants to do is ask, can I get the 1.8 FAR when only 1.5 is permitted? And we can't answer that question. I mean, we can't, you know, and that's, that's the difference between.
I mean, the only thing we can say is it depends on, it really depends on, you know, the evidence you present. I don't know, you're right, you really, it's fairly difficult.
And that's another thing with SPRAB, it's like they were not supposed to comment on variances, because you didn't have a planner there going over the positive and negative criteria, so. I think there's just a little bit of a, on the council and some of the planning board members to to get this reorganized in a manner that. Addresses some of the issues that they think are out there today. I'm not saying that SPRAB does a bad job. I think they they have done good, great reviews and sometimes they're, you know, not as focused as they should be, but. It's just tough for us. I mean, we have one or two site plans a year. So it's not as big of an impact on us. I mean, if if you feel it's an impact on the planning board, then. You know, you could, you you're welcome to raise that situation, but I just find it, you know, it's always been. Tough to have. A pre-hearing on a zoning board use variance, you know.
Oh, it is.
And I don't know how you do it unless you hire consultants to review the architectural design guidelines and. You need design guidelines, obviously, to do that, which we don't have, but.
Right.
About that.
Well. Where do we go from here?
Well, you have a couple of choices. One is you don't have any comments. It was sent to you for comment, you don't have a comment. Second would be. Uh, the question Donna presented. If the zoning board decided it wanted to have some. Subcommittee. You're you're reading this to say you could, too. See what, see what the answer is back from, if the answer from council is, uh, no. No, that's not what we think. Oh, oh, okay, well. Why is that? So those are specific questions. That's fine. You wanted to span spread, that's okay, but we we would like to inquire, are you anticipating, so the board would like to, they can make. Then we'd have to figure out what does a subcommittee do, but it would have some. Review role, not the full. And then make it.
What they do, we're worried about what they do down the road.
Exactly.
We wouldn't have to define that now, so.
Exactly.
To get out of this meeting tonight, it's it's, you know, you know, the options that you've put forth. Um, I don't know if you really got to the third option, if there was one.
The third, I guess, the all, the third option is, but I I I'm not sure how it would. Improve, I mean, I don't know what that can lead to, to say, you want, the board wants more time, the zoning board, to consider this. So that leads to the next question of what do you consider? Like, what what would you want more time for?
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Want more time, I think you just want the option.
Exactly. So if the zoning board decides down the road. We we think it's helpful to us and I I I think under. I think under the municipal land use law, you could do it. Would it be helpful if it was also in an ordinance? Sure, sure, that would be fine, but. That's a straightforward question. If the planning board gets to do these things, what about zoning board? Sometimes we get site plans, too. So if you're letting planning board have that option or zoning board has that option as well, and that's very straightforward. Yes. Okay, yeah, sure, that's what you want to do. And then I guess, as as it as it proceeds along, if in fact, the design criteria now in ordinance for that gets adopted. All right, well, then that provides more structure then for a subcommittee. Could be, you know, some applicants come in for bifurcated applications where they say, well. I I I want to know if the use works for you, and I would work with your subcommittee on, you know, the appearance and the design. And all those kinds of things. So I mean, if you think about it, there could be a role for the zoning board, so. There might be.
Practically, practically speaking, there isn't much chance that we're going to have a subcommittee. I mean, look at the makeup of of who we are, I mean.
Well.
Well, if it's a, if it's a legitimate question, maybe it'll get a legitimate answer.
If it, if it was a subcommittee, we couldn't talk about the use.
No, it would focus on, it would be focusing on, that's why, probably in a bifurcated application. Where the applicant says. I don't want to spend money on a site plan now. I mean, I show you some things because maybe you won't approve my views. And then I will come back to you with my site plan. So I mean, that's a, that's an example where a subcommittee says, okay. Now we know the use is allowed, we as the subcommittee, here are some thoughts we have, or. We will be presenting our, you know, our recommendation to the full board. So it's not that the committee could never have anything to do. It's just that some applicants would say, I don't want to split up my application, I'm doing it all now. So I'm I'm telling you, I want this use, I want this height, here's my plan. And in in a big project, I mean, we've seen developers, they take the feedback and, you know, and it gets carried to another meeting and they say, all right. All right, I I heard what you said.
What what I heard was. Three possible options unless somebody has a. Free possible options unless somebody has a a fourth or a fifth, which is no comment. Which is, we ask the question about what if the zoning board wants a a subcommittee? Or we say we'd like to have more time.
Correct.
Are there are there any other things to consider or could we kind of move this along and just make a decision? You know? Any any thoughts?
I would, I would say of those three, probably the logical thing to do, given where we're at now, is say we'd like more time.
My response is that the limited use we get out of it, I'd rather have no comment, just move on, see what happens.
Or you can make a motion on something, right? And the board could act and I can relay whatever your wishes are to the planning board. Tomorrow night or council Monday night.
Well, it's worthy worthy of a motion and a vote from one of one of the three options.
All right, somebody, somebody make a motion, we'll. Discuss it, we'll get a second and we'll vote.
I don't think I can make a motion as an alternate, right?
No, no, you can't because you can't vote. Well, George can because we we, you know, you you're the first alternate, George.
I don't understand.
Here in no motions and we don't want to take any action, sounds like to me.
Why do a motion? Why not just do a straw vote?
Okay.
And then you do a motion based on that.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy to support whatever we want to do. I just like to. I think we ought to get on it.
Well, the so just to clarify, the the suggestion for the third option, asking for more time is. I mean, are we asking, are we being more specific about the more time?
Yeah, what will you do with more time?
Right, and 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 so tied into that, I guess, would be that we're asking for clarification from. Council, is is that correct? Yes. So we're asking for more time for them. And for them to clarify and then for us to consider.
Or for more time for us to to come to a consensus on our comments and give it to them.
Yeah, well, we're meeting next week, so.
Yeah, but we have. Full agenda and then a discussion item on the end of that that we need to deal with.
All right.
We have to have a special meeting, I mean.
How about how about this as a compromise? How about? You pass along to the council fact that. Within this timeframe, you know, that they're trying to get it voted on Monday night. So within this timeframe. These are the thoughts the zoning board have. And your main concern or question is. With the elimination of sprab, will zoning board have the ability to create its own subcommittee if it wants to also conduct?
If we feel it's necessary.
Yes, if they feel it's necessary, the application warrants it, yeah.
So moved.
So.
Sounds good to me.
I'm serious. I'm I'm not against any of these things, but I think we, you know, we're talking in circles, so let's find out how everybody feels and. Either do it or not, but I think raising that question is fine, but. How's everybody feel? So I move that we send the one question to the council.
Sounds good.
Outline.
Yeah.
And and what is that question, Steve, that you're moving? No, I'd like you to.
That's not fair.
If you can't restate what you're moving.
Okay.
Well, I can't vote on it.
I was gonna say, in that case, I withdraw my motion, but. Now that that we would like to know whether, under specific circumstances, we could form a subcommittee. To raise those questions.
Do you mean to raise the questions or to?
No, 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 to review.
Review a site plan similar to what the planning board.
Yes.
We do the same thing the planning board subcommittee might do.
Right, right.
Yeah, I'm just reading the planning board subcommittee and it does talk specifically about early meetings and. They have the flexibility to do that. I just think there's legal issues that we can't.
Yeah, we can't do.
You know, I mean, I think if we want to have a review committee, we may have to hire a consultant. I mean, I can see if we can get, we can ask, we can have the applicant pay for it as another another consultant fee in the escrow. Or if you feel it's important to have people from town volunteers to serve on sprab to continue to do that function, then you can state that, but I don't think. I mean, we, they hear one or two applications every two years from us, so it's it's not. You know, and then.
Yeah.
I have both for for the hotel, we had a nice report from HPC and another sprab report, and that's just. There's a certain point of the amount of reviews that a project's got to go through before they can get to the.
No, and I understand that. I mean, we don't want to make, we don't want to put a, you know, drag a an applicant through the dirt here, you know?
I honestly don't think it will affect our review of applications that much because. They're still going to be reviewed by numerous parties. We don't see that many a year. I think the bigger issue is more with the planning board because that's, it's been an accepted practice there for thirty or forty years and. You know, that's, it's a bigger impact on them than it is on us.
Okay, I withdraw my motion and and move that we do nothing at this point. Can I get a, can I get a second?
Is is there a second?
I'll say, I think, yeah. I think our hands are tied, as Derek has said, as far as being able to legally, it's too big of a road to hoe, I think, at this point.
Yeah, I think that's the big, I think that's the biggest issue. How do we implement it? I mean, how would we actually do it?
Yeah.
I don't think.
We got a motion and a second. Called to vote, Chair.
All in favor?
Read the motion again, read the motion. Tell me what it is. I want to hear it again.
The motion is that we. In essence, we're not going to do anything about this proposal.
First, the first option is submit no comment.
So do we even need a motion to do nothing?
What's what's the consensus? Is it is is everybody comfortable? At this stage, that's really what we're talking about.
That's exactly.
If anybody is is opposed to this.
Let's do, let's do a raise of hands of those people who feel comfortable with not taking any further action at this point.
Bring it to everybody.
Yeah, we're right off the last hour, I guess.
It was worth the discussion, though. It was worth the discussion.
Yes, it was.
It was, sure, sure. It was. It's good discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it the, I think this, our decision wasn't. Lack for lack of concern. I think our decision was for the specifics of how we would actually implement it.
Well, yeah, we we've just gotten really illuminated this situation. So we need a little bit of time just to kind of. Examine our navels for a while to understand whether what what we would possibly do about it. And get, you know, you know, comments from, you know, everyone involved to see if there's somewhere that this could go or if it really is. Something that's best left alone.
All right, so at this point, we had no comment. Right?
Funny as that is to say, I think it's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we all, we do now have a much better understanding of the issues at least, and that's, you know.
Yeah.
It's not the last time we'll ever talk about it, I'm sure.
It doesn't absolve us from being able to bring something up in the future, I guess, if something really goes. If it really becomes a problem, then, you know, it can be something that can be raised, even if. Even if they make a decision tomorrow, then we still have some discussion to be had, I guess.
Yep.
Okay. Are we calling it quits here? Well, okay, if, does anybody have anything else to add or do we just call it a night?
Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Motion to adjourn.
This is actually just hint water, so just let everyone know. It's it's water. All right.
See you next week, everyone.
All right, we'll see you next week. Good night.
See you, Derek. Take care.
Good night.